I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Hassler.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Jones.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderwoman Arthur Sterker. Mayor, we have a forum.
Very good. A move for approval of the agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Takes us down to the city administrator's report.
Okay. First AT&T call day to ask about any zoning issues on the cell tower. Then they called me to talk about the construction access easement and their desire to amend the easement. And then they sent me the amendment documents which I forwarded to Mark and he's reviewed. He said, "There's no problem." So they'll be on your agenda for the next meeting. But I asked him, I said, "Is all this conversation and all this in anticipation of construction?" And he said, "Yes." So he couldn't give me a specific date, but it will be within the next four months. They will begin to be constructing the tower and converting to the long-term lease that we had negotiated with them and start the revenue stream.
I had a visitor the other day that basically said that AT&T has sold all of their towers.
AT&T doesn't own towers, but yes, go ahead.
They did until recently, but they sold all of their towers and stuff to another company. Will this have any effect on our lease and...
No, because their lease anticipates them not owning the tower and allows them to sign up the ownership of the lease. Their final meeting with FEMA, Gary attended that meeting. The only remaining issue they had is where did you take your sandbags? Sandbags become hazardous material after a flood and you have to dispose of them a certain way. Railroad in this case anxious to get the floodgates opened took all that stuff away. And the guy from FEMA says, "Well, then it's not your responsibility."
It's amazing.
Yeah. The levy district meeting, levy district had a conference call with the railroads. And we thought that this was going to be about procedures for facilitating the opening and the closing of the gate, better coordinating and whatever. And it turned out it was a conference call with every levy district or city that has a levy from far north is all the way down. And they were all on the phone and you couldn't understand. So they just kind of levy district members hung in there until the end and they finally ended up talking. And I was in my office, I wasn't part of the process, but that was about two hours wasted time for them because it did not come to any conclusion that I could discern. I spent a lot of my time, as you know, going through resumes and preparing for meetings and having interviews. So that's hopefully a reaching conclusion. The meeting for the Industrial Development Corporation, Chamber, County Commission, and us about the Parkwood Extension and subdivision development was canceled as I reported our last meeting and it's been rescheduled, so we'll be attending on March the 4th to talk to them about that.
March the 4th?
Oops. May the 4th?
No, March.
When is it?
I'll tell you.
It's not March.
It's next Friday. Next Friday, whatever next Friday is.
The 20th.
20th.
March 20th, yes.
Oh, that's down here. March 20th. I had that. And then I've been doing some placing some ads for tourism. Again, something is kind of outside of my wheelhouse, but the Tourism Advisory Commission, the Tax Commission, did authorize a renewal of some ads, so I found those. Tourism Advisory Council advised to continue with an ad program that's already in the budgeted, in the budget and I will have that ad placed probably tomorrow. So again, I kind of almost half know what I'm doing with that, but I'll continue to do it. Any questions? Thank you.
Very good. David?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
You have my report there as far as the area commission that are meeting and approved a couple of appropriations. From the federal government and we will match that with about 50%. We talked about that a few months ago, so that'll probably be in the fall or spring of next year. Philly department wise, you have the information there on permits, rental housing. If they see fit, get together again in April. Planning and zoning, we had a meeting, approved some recommendations. Some of those will be coming to you in two weeks. Flood plane management, so with the report that I gave you was a letter that came out of a meeting we had about the flood potential for the city, I believe in October, maybe, I don't know, it was last year. Quite a few things came out of that. One of them was the intent to send a letter out to folks and say, "Hey, prepare. This is what you can do. We can't predict that there's going to be a flood, but just in case, here's some information. Here's some links. Here's some preparation." So that letter was with your packet. Hopefully you can take a look at it in case you get any questions. Plans are already put out to those who are in what's called Zone X within the next two weeks. That Zone X would be the flood plain that's protected by the levy. So they wouldn't typically get water, you know, on the property, but just in case the water were to top the levy, they might have a chance of it. So we just wanted to send out some information to them. There is no anticipation of that happening. The National Oceanic and Atmospheric Agency has predicted moderate flooding for the spring season. If that's your packet, let me know if you have any questions. I wanted to go over a couple other things. 777 Jefferson, remember that was a nuisance abatement? That building was demolished over the past three days and is now down, gone. Wanted to let you know we put some of this on Facebook, but the Census, 2020 Census Self-Response began yesterday, so folks will be getting a card in the mail that tells them how to self-report, either via online or by phone. If they don't do that over the course of the next month, probably in April, mid-April, they'll get a paper response to send in. We put a phone number out on Facebook if they have questions on the questionnaire or they can go to the Census Bureau website themselves. And lastly, just want to put in a reminder, I did this last year. It's spring, it's raining, temperatures are rising, insects are breeding. So if you have anything in your yard that holds water that could be a nuisance, please take care of it. Clean your gutters. It'll help prevent mosquitoes and that's my two cents on that.
Well, and if you have standing water like pond or something that we can treat, we could, we'd call. We have, I guess you still have Larvicide. We have Larvicide to treat natural water, not things you can dump over.
Any questions? Another thing.
Thank you.
Gary Rock?
Barton Sander? Good evening. I got my report. Worked on the site in Archway and Gresslon Cemetery. Not if you're familiar, the cemetery used to get locked up and there was that archway with gates hanging on it. With all this wet weather, it was actually pulling it over. So we removed the gates and straightened it all out. Repaired the rail on Third Street Bridge after the blast flood. Cleared debris from under the bridge on Main Street and on Third Street. Replaced a cover pipe on St. Mary's Road that should have discovered last fall and had collapsed.
How long will it take before you can repair the hedge?
They're should be making hot mix asphalt within the next couple of weeks. We cut up and hauled up a tree in the skateboard park that we had cut down. We tore down the dugouts and the backstop on the North Ball Field. Placed steps on the entrance to the dog park, put a rock on the entrance. Cleaned up leaves around the fence. Dug out the grass on Valley Spring Trail where we have issues that were here with it taking over the mulch. Cleaned up the leaves out there. Painted the flag, pulled City Hall. Worked on and rocked a ditch on the Fourth Street by railroad tracks. Went on a storm drain on the Front Street. Worked around Big Pavilion in the City Park. Replaced some benches in the soccer field. Valley had replaced a bunch of their bleachers and had several women's boards left over, so they gave them to us to put on the soccer field. Seated and fertilized the soccer field. Dug out and rocked a ditch on Leahy and North Sixth Streets in the 11th and 12th Ward.
Any idea when you're going to be able to clean out all the debris at plant base?
As soon as we can get in there.
I saw the new signs going up around downtown as well. They look good. Thank you very much.
That was all done after my report, so.
That was good.
Gary, there, I've seen on your report several times about the rail on the Third Street Bridge and I know it's really an issue when it does come down. Is there any, I mean, you've tried whatever you can?
I mean, people's trying to do that since I was a kid.
Okay. It just...
The method we're taking at now is just let it take the boards away and, you know, so it's break away and leaves the metal there and we just have to bolt new boards on, so.
Okay. Thanks.
If anybody else got a better idea, I'm more than happy to listen.
Gary, can you comment about the, that conversation we had before the meeting about that issue on what's in there crossing the canyon?
Yeah, I got, I called in with one of the contractors. We're going to meet about the wall at Fifth and Washington and so we need to get some input from him, so.
No, the resident there is very concerned about that. And I think if it gave way, then the street would probably collapse right there also because it is dipping down now.
So have we ever determined that's our wall?
Right on the line. I had a elevator come out, identified the property corners and it would be, it would be back in place. It would be right on the line. Nobody knows.
So you're saying the line?
Property line between those.
Goes right down the middle of the wall or the wall is on city property or on private property?
It goes down the middle of the wall.
Middle of the wall. So it's half ours.
You know, nobody kind of knows why it got built or when it got built, by whom. I can't imagine the property owner would build a concrete structure quite like that, but on the other hand, it created the yard, so I don't know.
Well, I think we have a responsibility.
Obviously it's the butt that holds up the road bit.
Yeah. That's what I was going to get at. We have a responsibility to fix it because of the streets.
Gary, I want to thank you for answering back to my request to have you take a look at 810 Leahy. Did you have a chance to look at that yet? You were going to get out there?
Yeah, I went and worked it out the next day.
And you get a chance to get back out there. Thank you so much, Gary. Well done. Beautiful.
It looks to me like you're getting your to-do list that we've had this winter done before grass grows.
You have to shrink it.
Good stuff. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Chief Starker?
Good evening, everybody. You have my report also. Probably the biggest thing I talked about tonight is we're in the middle of our annual maintenance program where we take one of our big trucks every night, every Wednesday night and do a complete overhaul, oil changes, loop jobs and everything. It takes about a night per truck. So we do about 10 or 12 hours, 10 or 12 weeks of that. The automatic aid that we started running with some of the neighboring departments in recent months has worked out well on both parts. We've had them come in on a couple of fires we've had. And recently, like Sunday, we had a big fire day. It was a major brush fire in the north end of county and south end of county. We were going to get called mutilated on one of the brush fires and we ended up catching a commercial first alarm out of the, it was our truck stop. We were actually the first truck there from St. Genevieve because everybody was so spread out. So with the way the volunteerism nowadays and trying to find manpower, it's about the only way to get covered is to work with other departments. So you got the manpower to help both ways. Then the last thing is, I'm sure you saw, we had our annual awards banquet back in February and the most impressive thing there is the number of years of service we've got some of these guys. So I'm really proud of the staff we've got and they've put a lot of effort into it. Entertain any questions you might have.
Chief, those brush fires, was that a pretty windy day? Did that contribute to those?
That was an extremely windy day and people, because it's the first couple of nice days out, get out and decide they want to get rid of their yard debris and don't pay attention, don't use common sense sometimes and it gets out of hand quick. There was actually a couple of trucks in the north end of the county, one of their brush fires that got overrun by fire and actually did some damage to the trucks.
Really?
It was how fast it was moving the other day.
But those were both outside of city limits?
Yeah, they were both outside.
Those were in the county? Thank you.
We've been real fortunate with brush fires around. We end up helping more than we have to put out here. Of course, majority of our coverage area is city, so.
Chief, on your facility here, it says you're waiting for guidance on how to win the one percent.
That was, what I've had a tendency to do is just leave things in there so you guys know that this is where we're at and I bow where we're at. I'm waiting on a couple of part numbers for, we're going to put in some automatic switching lights, like clauses and things. I'm trying to get those numbers finalized before I take it out for bids. And I was talking to Steve from Alliance the other day too, when we put the bid out. What we intend to do is put the bid out requesting prices for these items and also try to put a rider on there that other city agencies can take part in that bid because he expressed an interest in maybe doing some of that with the water department too. So we just want to make sure we have everything exactly the way it is before we take it out for bids. But I anticipate in the next week or two, we'll be ready to put out for bids.
Chief, just clarifying then, you're not waiting on the board to do a thing?
No.
You're engaged in that?
From my understanding, last meeting that you said we should take it out of rural fire, our rural fire, but capital improvements and that's all it was waiting for is to find out how we were doing it. Now, we're just about ready to go out there and seal bids on that.
And I was reading where one of your officers went out for a grant and got it?
Yep. With the community foundation grant, which is better known as wholesome, I have been for the last few years writing one as a fire department in the city and also as a tech rescue. One of our guys who's a training officer approached. The County Firefighter Association here hasn't really done a lot with it and requested permission for, on their behalf, to write a grant request. So he was able to get, I believe it's $10,000 some odd dollar.
Right.
Training prop through the county. It will belong to the county. We'll probably house it in St. Gene because we wrote the grant and we have a little bit more room than a lot of the rural departments, plus it'll make it a little more accessible for our guys to use. He took it on himself and I told him to run with it. So he was working on behalf of the county firefighters, but it's one of the guys on my department's office who were out of it.
Good stuff.
Know about it.
That's good stuff. Great. Thanks, Chief.
Congrats to your 35-year service.
No kidding.
Award.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you. Committee reports. Joe, you have anything planning and zoning?
No, sir.
Actually gave us a report last week of, last time about the park, so it sounds like we're going on with that tower. That's pretty exciting.
Yeah, that's good. And then just received an email yesterday from Nick and Mary with Dunsey Planning that are helping us out with the parks and looks like we've got the survey tweaked and ready to go. So that'll be going out to the public here pretty quickly. And then responses will just be due by April 15th, so might reach out to you all to help spread the word so we can get as many quality responses as possible.
Well, those responses and that's for use of the park, right?
Yeah, so the survey basically just kind of asks people how they currently use the parks, what of our city parks do they use? And then kind of gets their feedback on the amenities within the parks, what they think needs approved. And then it also asks them what they want, would like to see in the parks, what would make them use our parks more. And so it's getting a general idea of the community and how they want to use the park or continue using the park so that we can make it better.
And my next question, will that just go out to city residents or will that, because a lot of county people?
Yeah, it's open to, we want whoever is going to be a potential parkgoer to take the survey. City residents, county residents, people that come into town often to visit family. We're interested in their responses too because on the survey, it will have a question of, yeah, are you a city resident or where else? So we can kind of get a little bit of an idea of who's responding and how. But any potential parkgoer.
They set a goal on how many responses they'd like to see?
They didn't set out a goal, but we did talk about how we're going to distribute, reaching out to the schools to see how they can distribute to their teachers and even kids or students in the middle schools and high schools that could generate responses that would be beneficial because, yeah, I mean, their input's just as valuable. So, and then posting flyers around the community and I'm in the process of setting up social media, Facebook, a Facebook page, email account for them to be in better connection with the, with the public that way, so.
Would there be a consideration to use that mailbag thing that everybody gets on Tuesdays? Yeah.
The paper?
No, no, it's Tuesday, that's separate from the paper.
Yeah, I think they kind of oversee it or whatever.
Oh, yeah, they do. Yeah.
Yeah, we've got a meeting at the end of the month, March 24th, I think it is. So we'll definitely be going into our action plans and I'll bring it up if it hasn't been brought up yet, so.
Joe? Wait on this side.
It's a closed session down here?
It's a closed session.
Give them their phones. Can we pull Dave back up, please?
Dave Boba? He's right there.
Well, I wanted to make sure we were at...
Oh, we're, Joe, it's a committee report.
Dave, we had, I know Ashley and I have both gotten a bunch of calls about a property in Valley Springs. Where do we stand on that for the city's standpoint?
With the shed? The applicants, it was miscommunication. The applicants, I thought, told me that they had permission from the subdivision. They did not. So I went back to the subdivision architectural committee to let them know I needed to have something signed from them to approve it and that it needed to share a wall, which we had discussed in advance. They were going to add a structure, it needed to share a wall. They can't, you can't have detached sheds in Valley Springs subdivision. So that's where it stands right now and they have not gotten the approval of the architectural committee, so I assume that structure will be gone, so. And that's all been communicated to the folks at Valley Springs.
Dave, can we add a level of written communication from any subdivision like that that has a regulations and stuff so before it comes to the city or before we get into a situation like this, that we have that subdivision's approval in writing?
Mark Shaughnessy and I have already discussed that because in the past, it's been, you know, I think he thought that we were the policing agency.
Right.
For their covenants. So folks would come in and plan and say, "We've spoke to Mark Shaughnessy. Mark and I have now talked, I also have Ron Bollinger, that we either need signed plans or digital plans sent from his email."
Just so there's a... What's the size of this structure? I've observed it, but I didn't measure it.
I really don't know the size of it. Off the top of my head, I want to say it's under 200 square feet.
It's 10 by 10.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think it's a 10 by 10.
So you're going to issue a building permit for a 10 by 10 structure?
There's confusion there. If you go to the IBC, it says anything 200 square foot and under. If you go to the IRC, it goes anything 120 square foot or under.
Still 10 by 10, that is...
And if you go to our ordinance, there's a price list, which I know doesn't necessarily designate a permit, but there's a price for a permit for any shed 100 square foot or under. So what it really boils down to is it's the building inspector's call and Mike has decided that we're not going to permit sheds under 200 square foot. And I've shared with some of the folks who have gotten those permits that if we need to refund them their $7, we will. Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other committee reports? With that, I'm going to open up public comments. I invited Sandy Bell from the Health Department to come and talk about the coronavirus tonight. So the board is informed what the Health Department is doing. I know there's some confusion and question and I thought, well, this would be a good platform because we are televised, a good platform to discuss this for a little bit so we all know what to do when your constituents ask you. Joe, you got some?
No.
Okay. So she also invited several of her friends. We got the school here because they're, it's important to them, it's important to all of us. Hospital's here. Merch management, the lyrics is here.
Chair, I'm not sure chair.
Camera, everybody?
Dr. Bosner.
This is the first one from the hospital and Dr. Bosner's here. I'm going to put me on the camera by myself. Thank you very much.
Joe, will you go up and adjust that, please, at the microphone so we can hear her? She's kind of soft voice.
And I talk fast, as you all know.
You have to slow down.
You might just have to listen back. Thank you for letting us be here. We wanted to get the word out to the community that all of us and other city, county officials, agencies, schools, law enforcement, ambulance, emergency management, medical providers and public health are definitely working closely, daily, to address issues and situations as they develop in the county and to prepare for response. We all stay in close communication with each other and work together to prepare or respond for ever-changing events. We have set up a group email that I send out all the time and Mayor Hassler's on it, so is Martin, and I can include anyone else who would like to be on it to get the updated information I send out on a daily basis. As of, well, this has changed. As of 5:15 today when I wrote this, 73 people in the skateboard tested. One was positive and one was presumptive. That presumptive as of 6 o'clock tonight is now positive and that's in Greene County. That's exactly how fast all of this is changing. So what I was recommending on Monday is not what I recommend today and not what I'll probably recommend on the following Monday. So it's ever-changing and it's ever-fast. And we have to stay in close communication so that we all know what we're doing and we're good all together. What I handed you out was some basic information that I am giving out regarding the coronavirus and different situations. I do partner with other health departments and I provided you with the update that Jepson County blew out. We do partner also with all the regional health departments. I have here, if you want it, um, we've been getting calls from some of the, um, food establishments in the county on what they can do to clean and disinfect or coronavirus. So I do have this document. I can leave it with you. You can copy it if anybody wants to ask for it.
Maybe good.
I also have. Somebody have my t-shirts? That's fine. We have this laminated at the health department and we provide it around the county to other people. You welcome to post it if you want it or do whatever you want. If you want the color copy, email me and I'll send it to you.
Or just let me know. She sent it to me.
Did you send that out, Dave?
Yes, those were sent out to all providers and employees.
Can you get us hooked up with her dissemination of information?
Very good.
Can you get the all of them?
I have the county blue reports, because I anticipated some, I have the county blue reports. I anticipated questions on the blue. If you want it, I can give it to you. No names on it, just their ages and whether they have legal ID.
Is there the all of them that does not wanna be on her distribution list, but this, we'll give it to her? And you can just add your names to the distribution?
It's a lot of good, it's a lot of information that's coming out, but.
And some of it's I forget and send it out twice.
The last thing we wanna do is be looking like we're not prepared.
Right.
There is a lot, there has been a lot of preparation going on through this. It's just that, you know, not everybody, and that's what we're doing. This is currently for the public too, so.
And I know we had talked earlier in the week that I was gonna do a town hall meeting and have answered questions and built the people. I'm not doing that now.
That's not a good idea. I was thinking that with the, with all the people now, that's not a good idea.
I know. So I'm going to try to work with, um, the TV station here and see if they'll make a video and I'd like you to be on it and Martin be on it and, yeah, you could be there. And then we're going to, um, all of these people will be on it and we're gonna just get out the information and then post it. Any questions?
Doctor, please.
Okay, thank you, Mark, for the question. Absolutely, you're welcome.
Oh, and I wanna reiterate.
Mark, who are you?
I am Julie Fleege. I'm the superintendent at St. Genevieve. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I forget that sometime. I wanna reiterate that, yes, we are in constant communication. Uh, I don't know how many times I've talked to Sandy today. And I also want to let the public to know that St. Jen and Valley are talking. I've talked to Father Neemeth, I believe, three or four times today and Mr. Miller at the high school once. Uh, so we're trying to coordinate communication and make sure that we're sending out similar information at similar times to make sure everyone in the county is informed. I have had questions why we haven't closed school yet. My concern with closing school is, okay, I have three groups of kids. I have my littles, my pre-K through fifth grade. If I close school, those kids have to go somewhere because those parents are going to work. So those places those kids are going are going to be daycares with babies to five-year-olds and/or to their grandparents' house. Um, and the grandparent is the age group that is most susceptible to Corona. Um, so those kids are not going to stay home because those parents have to go to work. My other concern, um, my next concern then is middle school. If those kids live in a community where they can get out and run over to so-and-so's house, so-and-so's house and run around town or whatever, they're going to be out in the community running around because they're typically not going to daycare and/or grandma's house to be babysat. And then our high school kids, they're all mobile because most of them drive. So if they're not in school, they're either at each other's house congregating and/or some of them are out in their jobs in our community working. So, you know, I know they're all at school all together, but they're not out in the community being exposed to people who aren't members of this community. Does that make sense to you? So I just have concerns if we close school, where do those kids go if we're not being forced, everyone's being forced to quarantine and stay home? Um, so, you know, I've shared that with Sandy. I've talked about it with other people. Um, we are taking steps to sanitize everything deeper, every surface that can be touched. Uh, we're taking precautions, you know, staff, staff members, um, travel here or there. We're taking some precautions and asking some of them to stay home. We're, we're taking this very seriously, but we're in constant communication with county health and the hospital. We've talked to Sarah Kelly a few times too, so.
Has there been any talk about, I'm sorry.
I think I'm gonna ask the same question here.
Go ahead. Well, has there been any talk about, I know here, like, sporting events, now they've shut down everything. What about, what about you on that? And I know that's probably coming from the association, Missouri State High School, so.
Actually, what time did we talk tonight? 5 o'clock? 5 o'clock. Um, we were talking because tomorrow we are supposed to host a speech and debate, um, event for MISHA, Missouri State High School Activity Association. We had 10 schools coming here, bringing 10 to 15 students. Sandra did the math real quick. She said that's 150 to 200 kids plus their parents that are coming to watch. So, um, we talked about that. We talked about, um, we have me and my guy dodgeball, me and my gal dances coming up, um, where if a parent is not able to attend, an aunt or an uncle comes and those, those aunt's, uncle's friends can go anywhere. So, um, based on county health recommendation and some information that Sandra gave me tonight, we are going to cancel all events that would bring in people from outside St. Genevieve from now. And we're saying now, starting tonight, because we were supposed to have a high school play until Sunday, March 29th. We were going to put the notification out, but we heard that the governor was going to speak. Uh, we listened to the governor talk about the positive case in Green County and then we had to come here. So tomorrow, we will push all of that information out. So sporting events, dances, plays, anything that's gonna draw people from other communities to come here. And I did discuss this with Father Neemeth.
And I did also.
Yes. So, um, we have to talk more. He's at a different meeting. He wanted to be here, but he could not.
I just wanna add one more thing to clarify what Julie and I were talking about. We pick the end of the month because that's a two-week time period. In two weeks, we may make another adjustment, another decision. I don't want, well, I'd love to close the county down and everybody stay home, but we can't do that. So what I, we're doing two weeks at a time and we'll reevaluate this every single day and make a decision for the next two weeks after that.
Very good. Now, my next question is for the hospital.
Hi, my name's Nita Kurtz. I'm the infection control nurse for the hospital. Uh, we spent the whole day today in various meetings with administration, medical staff, uh, and leadership. And we have taken on a proactive approach, I would say. Um, we have changed some visitation. We have decided that, um, we will limit, like with one-day surgeries, we have patients who come in for surgery who also go home, you know, the same day. We have elected that when we do our pre, um, phone calls, our assessments, that we ask them to only bring one person with them so that, and that would be the person who would drive them home after their surgery. So we're trying to limit the traffic that we have, uh, also with our OBs, our moms that are delivering. Uh, you know, it's a great event. We like grandmas and grandpas and the whole family usually comes. We're going to ask that for the protection of the newborn and the mother and staff that they only limit it to the father or the significant other of the baby. We also are going to limit our visitation on med surg. Uh, you probably know that St. Jen Care and Riverview have shut basically all their visitation. A lot of our, um, patients are elderly and a lot of them are from the nursing homes. So if they're limiting their visitation and then we bring them to the hospital, obviously they're, they're sick. They're extremely ill. It doesn't make any sense for everybody to come visit them when they're in the hospital. So we are limiting, uh, our visitation on the med surg floor. Of course, if it's a end-of-life or comfort care hospice situation, we will make, you know, exceptions. We will, however, um, evaluate per se those patient or those visitors who are coming because we do not want to bring anything into the hospital. You know, if they're sick and they're showing fever, respiratory, been exposed, we, you know, we hate to be mean or cold, but you can't risk, you know, exposing staff and, and other employees or other patients. So, uh, we are making some exceptions and, you know, we're working with medical staff and it would be up to the attending physician of that patient to decide. Uh, we are replacing the volunteer staff. We're asking them to stay home because a lot of our volunteer staff are elderly and, as we know, the elderly are the ones that are affected most. Um, so we are staffing with our own employees. It looks like right now we're gonna use a lot of the business office staff to greet and ask some questions when a visitor comes. And then we will decide if we will allow them to come in or not or if they need to go back to their car and, you know, be treated at a doctor's office or, um, at the emergency room. I think, is there anything else? All right, I think that's it.
Will you be checking people as they come in for symptoms or?
Yes, we will have staff at the, uh, right there as you walk in. Where the volunteers used to sit, we will have staff there and they will have a list of questions and they will ask that patient or that visitor. And if there's any yeses and we're a little, we will ask them to probably either put a mask on or go back out to their vehicle until we assess the situation and then, you know, possibly send them home. Cause that's the best is just to quarantine them, send them home or else to, um, possibly be seen in the emergency room or walk-in clinic.
And I'm Missy from the hospital.
I got a question.
Yes.
So what if Joe has his symptoms? Should he just go straight to the hospital emergency room?
He should call.
Okay.
So anyone that has traveled within 14 days with symptoms, we want phone calls to any clinic because what we are probably gonna do is have you sit in your car and someone will come out and treat you in your car. The emergency room is completely different. You will come into the emergency room and be treated, but if you wanna go to your doctor's office or one of our walk-in clinics, we do want you to call first and someone will come see you in your car.
Do you have test kits?
We, the Department of Health and Senior Services is who's giving us our test kits and it's based on how many positive cases you have in your area. Sandy Bell has been excellent to help us get those kits. So we are limited right now who we can test through the state. We have called the state of Missouri this week asking to test certain people, but the criteria is very direct and if you don't meet the criteria, the state will not let us test you. So we are working with Quest, which is an outpatient testing site. And hopefully by tomorrow, we'll have a protocol about how to send tests through Quest.
And just for the public, what are the symptoms?
Go ahead.
Fever with a respiratory illness, travel within 14 days, or direct exposure to somebody with coronavirus, which means you have to be within six feet of someone with coronavirus.
For prolonged.
Prolonged period of time.
Which prolong, they say prolonged experience, uh, exposure from CDC, but they're not defining how, what is prolonged exposure? I don't know why I keep saying experience. But, you know, you can read a lot from CDC website and it's basically if you're living or caring for what an individual that may have had it. You know, our goal is to try to keep as much exposure down as possible. You know, we're not trying to be rude or.
Yeah, we wanna keep people safe. And if we can keep you in your car or your home, that is the safest place. Because once you're gonna come in a waiting room, everyone in that waiting room is now exposed. So travel is going to change daily by how many and how much the outbreak is in other states and other countries. So if that is the hardest thing, I think, that's why we're just asking, have you traveled in 14 days? And then we'll have a physician or a nurse practitioner get involved with the assessment.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I have one more thing I'd like to share from the school district. Hi, everyone.
And who are you for the record?
I'm Bailey Otto. I'm the communications director for the school districts. I just wanted to let you know, um, the school district has launched a dedicated webpage on our district site to COVID-19. This is specifically a hub of information. It's where we're putting everything that we've already shared with families along with a few other resources. There are some flyers on there. There's one, um, that is about how to help students or young children cope with stress during a pandemic, how adults can cope with stress during a pandemic. Um, and I think it's really just the reservoir for where we're putting all of our information that's going to affect our families. You can get to it if you go to our district website, sdradance.org. Down on the right-hand side, lower right-hand side, it says live feed. There's a section that says, hey, here's our new webpage. You can get to it there, access it there. Um, of course, we're gonna be sharing information, um, on social media. We already have. Uh, but we will be updating that website daily when we do have updates. Um, and another thing that I just wanted to mention, because I think it is incredibly important and we've kinda seen it in other areas and maybe here in the last week or two, is that we're trying to remind our families and community members that, of course, fear can instill, um, maybe some negative, uh, feelings and maybe we're sharing those and it creates stigma. So we really want to, you know, focus on how we're talking about individuals, how we're, um, how we're talking about, maybe in the next few weeks, the next few months, if we do have, you know, a larger spread in the area, how we're going to be talking about individuals who may be affected. Um, just be aware. I know it's the, uh, the age of social media and with that barrier, um, you know, if somebody can just say something through their electronic device, they don't always think twice about maybe how they're saying it. But just, we really urge everyone to be cognizant of the language they're using, especially when, when maybe there might be a panic and we just need to keep everybody calm and talk about how we're going to get through it together, so.
Ma'am?
Yes.
It, it seems like it's, the situation's fairly fluid. So do we have a, uh, a communication plan, any kind of a plan to tie all these disparate groups together? Maybe with some kind of a weekly briefing or a daily quick phone call, two, three minutes?
The county, um, Sandy Bell has started this and we are treating this as emergency preparedness. So all the communication that's coming out is going to our emergency preparedness staff at the hospital and then we are sharing it through that. But I'll let Sandy build on that one.
I, we had meetings, we've had meetings already in the county with partners involved and we do have an email that we are sharing. It is to be distributed as safely necessary in their, um, places of employment. Would you like, we have a Facebook page that we post constantly on. We have a designated site on our website as well. If you have something you'd like me to set up for the county, I'd be very happy to do that with you.
I, I'm just curious, like, it seems like we could just have a quick, uh, to make sure the county, the city, all emergency response, everybody's on the same page. However you do that is how you do that. I just.
We have a meeting with county commissioners, emergency management, and all the partners here. And we frequently on the phone together, but we can set up anything you would like.
I'd like to link on the city's webpage to her.
Sure.
And on the back page of what I handed out to you, it did not print well, so please, no, not that one, very last two. When you go to that website, it gives you a lot of information and it's a daily information for the state of Missouri. It changes almost all of it. But I tried to print it out and that's my fault, but if you go to that website at the top, you'll get a lot of information. I suggest you show that on the site. And I can share any information to my group you any time you want.
Well, again, the city, uh, some contact for the city is, is on any communication list that you have going on or? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Fair enough. All right, thanks.
One question for the medical. You talked about travel. Uh, is there any general recommendations, rule of thumb?
Well, the general recommendation is, um, if you're traveling, travel in your own car. I'm Dr. Bosner from the medical staff, to keep you the record. Travelist's recommendation is that you travel in your own vehicle, uh, not travel on, uh, public transportation, which is a bus, train, airplane, boat, or cruise. And actually, the state department recommend, recommended not going on any cruise travel for the foreseeable future. And the reason for that is the close proximity. And, um, so, so that's the, that's the general recommendation. So if you have to go visit grandma in Memphis, the recommendation is to drive to Memphis and drive back. Um, you know, for example, in the hospital, we're recommending no business travel and I know a lot of companies are recommending no business travel. And if you do have to, if you do have an emergency reason, it's to go by, by a car. Also, um, one point that I wanted to bring up is the issue of, of personal hygiene. It's recommended to use alcohol-based, um, cleaning agents, which have 60% alcohol. Soap and water actually doesn't, uh, clean viruses. So if you use like Purell or other hand sanitizers that have 60% alcohol, it's important to read the label because there are some hand sanitizers that aren't alcohol-based. So for, um, all of us here, for our, uh, individuals who are watching on, on the broadcast, you wanna look for an alcohol-based, 60% alcohol-based hand sanitizer. The other thing is when we wash our hands, the other key thing is that this is passed by water droplets, coughing and water droplets. So you wanna cough, you cough into your elbow or you use a Kleenex, sort of Kleenex out, wash your hands and also dry your hands completely. Because if your hands are wet and then you touch the handle of the bathroom when you leave the bathroom, the handle's gonna be wet. So you wanna make sure your hands are dried if you, in a bathroom. If it has one of those air dryers, it's recommended to use a, an air dryer in a bathroom if possible and to get your hands as dry as possible or to use, uh, towels and to dry your hands and to use a towel to open and close the bathroom door. Because the wetness on your hands, even though your hands may be washed with soap or the alcohol-based, uh, uh, cleaning agents, um, to use a, uh, towel to open and close bathroom doors. And, you know, personal hygiene is really, really critically important.
So, I was in an oral surgeon's, uh, office today and they signed up and said, don't come in and you've got any symptoms, call this number. So you also had a public restroom. That had a. She also had a public restroom worker that had a hair dryer. So, washing my hands, dried my hands, then I had to open the door and there was no towels because they have the air dryer. Should we carry our own towels, I guess?
How beautiful.
The hairs will then be on my clothes.
Well, but it's better to be on your clothes than on your hands because you might touch your face. Just, just as soon as you get home, take that off and wash it.
Carry some Kleenex in your pocket and then throw the Kleenex out.
I got my period.
Right.
Hager chief.
Towels.
The problem with the hanger chip is that you don't want to throw it out, right? So, or wash it when you get home or carry it, you know, one of those personal packets of Kleenex and then throw the individual Kleenex out when you throw it out. But I think, you know, one good, you know, there, we always have to look at the positives, right? One important part of this is that it's, it's teaching us about personal hygiene, right? About washing our hands like grandma and mom always taught us. The other thing I think, you know, a good lesson of this is that we're looking at this as a community engagement. I mean, think about this, we're all getting together as community agencies and we're looking at a cohesive plan, as you have all said. How can we work together as different community agencies and come up with a cohesive way of coordinating how we look at the plan as a hospital, as public health, as, as county and municipal agencies, how we can deal and be proactive. And that's what we want to do. We have meetings all day at the hospital and we want to be a leader as, as the, as the leading healthcare facility. We want to show an example for the community that we're being proactive and what can we do and we're doing the best we can do. You know, maybe, you know, we don't think we're making mistakes, we want to be as proactive as possible to show an example for the community, how we can, we can strive to be the best we can be. We communicate with the school, we communicate with public health, with, with the police, with the, the emergency agencies and, you know, things are going to change. This is a very fluid situation. The high-risk areas change on a regular basis and we stay abreast of that and we'll keep you informed and we, we hope that you communicate with us your, your thoughts and concerns. For example, we, we have a fundraising event every year at the hospital called the Taste of St. Jen. It was scheduled for April 4th, we decided to put that off just because of public interest and, you know, we'll announce the date for that, but we thought it was best, you know, to put it off and, you know, that was a big decision, but we thought it was best in the public interest to put that off. And, you know, we'll let people know when we're going to reschedule that. I don't know what Valley's going to do about their auction, which is in a couple of weeks. And, you know, the superintendent, you know, has talked about the sports activities, you know, at, at the high school and the other high school events. So this is a very serious matter. This is not a hoax, this is a really serious matter and all of us, you know, communicating is the key thing. It's a coordinated community effort is the best way to deal with this. We want to thank you for inviting us here, you know, to share your thoughts and to share our thoughts and we're always available by different mechanisms. You can get in touch with us at the hospital. Sandy is, is on top of this, she's done an incredible job of coordinating our efforts from the healthcare world and you can always communicate through her and she'll get to us if you have any specific questions from the healthcare aspects of this. So thank you very much for asking us. We're happy to ask, ask any questions, answer any questions.
So you mentioned that it's not a hoax and thank you for clarifying that because on social media, obviously, and with the hysterics of Costco and, and all that, there's a lot of talk about overreacting, but we still do need to take this seriously. A lot of comments that I've kind of seen out there on social media are, why are we acting like this towards COVID-19, but it shows the same symptoms as the flu and why don't we take this in response to the flu? Is there anything that we can kind of clear up there for the public that might be watching?
Well, one difference is that this is a novel virus. We've never seen this before. And when you look at the flu epidemic of 1918, this is what happened in 1918 when the flu strains were relatively novel. That's why the flu killed so many people in 1918 and it's not killing people now. We haven't been immunized for this. We have a flu, a vaccine for COVID-19 that'll come up in the next year or so and we can immunize maybe half the population, hopefully, with Sandy's help and all of her help. Maybe we can immunize a lot, but this year we immunize probably 45 to 50% of the community, which is better than nothing. But if we can immunize people over the years, that then.
Those are flu numbers for the county?
Yeah, our flu numbers, we have, you know, we still have 105 cases of A and 150 cases of B. Okay, we're still getting infectivity and most of these cases, we have a family of four people, three people got, got vaccinated and one didn't. So Papa, who decided, oh, I don't need the flu vaccine, he comes home, he's coughing in the whole house and, and the viral load of the flu we're talking about now is so high in the house, he, he can over stimulate the rest of the house, so the rest of the people get the flu. We've seen it in our, in our community, in our hospital and that's what happens. So that's the difference. The difference is, over the years, people have been immunized, either auto-immunized or vaccinated against the flu, whereas we haven't seen this virus before. So what's going to happen over the next 50 years is that we've seen this virus, our bodies are either going to be exposed to it, so we're going to have auto-immunity, or we're going to be vaccinated by shots that we get over the year. We don't know if it's going to be a single vaccination, we're going to get re-vaccinated. We're going to learn that from the immunologists who are going to teach us and the CDC is going to teach us what we have to do. We're all learning. This is a learning process that all of us are gonna, are gonna have to get the information from. And that's, that's the difference. This is novel. The other, the other difference, just clinically from the flu is when you get the flu, you get sick immediately. Okay, you're fine at eight o'clock in the morning, at noon, you feel awful. It's like you're hit by, by a Mack truck. You have body aches, fever, chills, and cough. With this, it's insidious for a couple of days. You're, you're exposed to it, you, you don't feel anything for a couple of days and it's not till five to nine days later that all of a sudden you start getting symptoms. Okay? And that, that's the tricky part because you've actually been exposed for five to seven days before and then you get, you start getting sick later. The other thing that we don't understand, and this is particularly important, you know, for, for the schools, is that kids are relatively immune to this. This is, this is a disease of middle-aged and older people and we don't know why that is. So there's a lot we have to learn about this whole process and, and we're going to learn about it because we're living it. We're going to learn a lot of information over the next year or two about this whole process. So it's a very serious problem. We're all part of the experiment. This is a, this is a living experiment that we're all going through and, and I think, you know, we're taking, we're taking the, the information seriously, we're, we're trying things that we think might work. And I think the exposure, the quarantine is tried in true measures, that, that was true, you know, with plague, it was true with the influenza. That's how influenza epidemic of 1918 was cured. It was only cured when quarantine was instituted in New York and Boston and Philadelphia. It's the only way it was, it was brought under control. When, when people stopped going to church in 1918, that's when influenza in 1918 was stopped. Now, it was a really hard thing to convince people not to go to church. Okay? And they didn't have television, you couldn't, you couldn't hear the sermons online, it didn't exist. But convince people not to go to church was a huge thing. So to get the pastoral community to, to buy into this was a huge, was a huge thing. You know, when the pastoral community bought in and actually were the leaders of, of essentially proselytizing that, that the, the implementation of the care plan or quarantine, that's when it actually started being controlled. So we're actually learning from history, from medical history. So we appreciate all of you supporting us because that's, that's where we are right now.
We can't do this all community effort. We have to have a partnership to make all the decisions that we make. Today, the decision we make will not be over made two months from now, possibly, but what we're doing now is the best interest, in the best interest of the public with the knowledge that we have as of today. I want to reiterate what Dr. Bosner said and what Bailey has said, social media is a great thing to get information out and it's a horrible thing. Some of the things that are being passed around in this county on social media is mean, malicious, and totally false information. So I strongly encourage people to ignore that rumors abound, follow the legitimate sites that we all have to give you legitimate information. And if you have anything you can put on your city site, that would also help as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
One other question and stuff, commercial-grade hand sanitizers are in short supply. What's the next best thing?
Best thing is, is hand washing with soap and water and drying your hands.
Anything else? Straight alcohol or?
Straight alcohol, you know, I guess if you're not into alcohol.
That was only 40%.
Forty percent, right?
Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Are there any other public comments? No, we're good. Thanks for coming, Sandy. Thank you all very much. All right, at this time at 6:59, we're gonna have a public hearing. Well, I gotta read all that. Board of Alderman, the City of St. Genevieve will hold a public hearing to consider an annexation petition filed by the city on February 6, 2020 by Mar, Mar, Bandera, Mauricio Manderas Aguilar and Maria Alvarez, owners of Plaza Aztec Family Grill Incorporated. All territory annexed to the City of St. Genevieve is classified as an R1 single-family residential upon annexation. The property currently has construction of a proposed restaurant occurring. This, this use will require rezoning before operation. All the land in the St. Genevieve County, Missouri is contiguous and compact to the existing city limits of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri.
Before I speak, there's a gentleman in the audience who wanted to make a public comment and missed the window.
Oh, okay. Wait a minute, we're, we'll.
Do you want to come back after?
Come back after the.
Yes, yeah. Plaza Aztec Family Grill, otherwise known as El San Felipe, is requesting annexation of property at 21454 Highway 32. You have a legal description. This is contiguous and compact to the city. It borders city property, has utilities available to it and they wish to be annexed into the city. Do you guys want to say anything? Yes, sir.
I had one concern and I think I've got that answered, I just wanted to make sure, but there was a question over which utilities they were.
What's the question?
Going to be utilizing of the cities.
I believe they're hooking to county water and they'll be hooking to city sewer. Is that correct? I thought there was both or.
Yeah, that's not what I was just told, so.
That was also not my understanding.
Right, we need to get that clarified.
That wasn't Martin's, because I got the information from Martin.
That's correct. Water line is closer to the back of that property than the county is on the other side of the road?
The water line is 10 feet closer than the sewer line they're hooking up to at the back of the property.
Well, that would connect both the city's water and sewer.
That's right. Did you want to answer that? Was there a reason that you connected the county water versus sewer, city water? And go ahead and tell us.
My name's Mauricio Manderas and I think people like, they say they like the county water there. I mean, but it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter with us if it has to be county or city.
So, there's a general rule that if you're annexed into the city, you access city utilities. An exception would exist if city utilities weren't in proximity to your property, but in this case, it's closer and cheaper for you because you don't have to go under the alley. And Steve can address the quality of the water issue, he's done that many times.
The difference, what you're gonna find with the water is.
Steve.
The difference with the water quality with the city versus county water, our water's treated, it's, we add chlorine to our water for disinfection. The county water, you're gonna find it to be a lot harder. It's gonna be harder on your fixtures, it's gonna be harder on your plumbing, your aerators and on your sinks, dishwashers.
You said the county or the city?
The county's gonna be that way. There'll be a lot more maintenance. You're gonna have to purchase a water softener, you're gonna have to treat the water in the house, in the restaurant and everything yourself. City water is already, county water I know is located at the front of the property, city water is located at the rear of the property. Contractor's already running the sewer line to the sewer. Same, same line will be ran over to the water, same distance.
Steve, I don't know if this is, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I, I don't know if this is a question you can address, but would this create some kind of a one-off situation with billing? Like, do we have any other people in this scenario or would this be a one-off situation where this particular bill goes out only for sewer? And how do you calculate that? If sewer is based on water consumption, how, how does that work?
At the need of your sewer.
Which would be a one-off situation.
We actually call the county to get their, their usage from the county to, to do the sewer.
So, so.
If, if we would need to do that.
So an extra piece of work for staff to do to, to allow this to happen like this? Correct?
We're already doing it or stuff, there are others out there that it's calculated to don't make this.
Okay.
Dana, I, I haven't looked at it, I was just trying to pull up the ordinance. I thought the ordinances of this city required for an annexation that they be on city sewer and city water unless it was not.
Not what I'm aware of. It requires that if you're on city water, you're on city sewer.
But not vice versa?
Correct. There are multiple properties in the city that receive a sewer bill currently that are not on city water.
Are those commercial or residential?
I think they're all commercial, are residential.
Are the owners willing to, to consider connection to city water in, in lieu of county or?
It sounded like he said that it was just him talking to your, you were talking to your customers and people make the comment, oh, we love county water better than the city.
Well, let's hear, let's hear it from the business owner though, is there a plan? Would you consider connecting the city utility exclusively water and sewer or is it off the table for you?
I mean, we can, we can do the city water if we have to. I mean, you just have to talk to my contractor.
Okay, I mean, personally from my seat, I need clarification because I can't, I can't vote to approve that annexation without knowing that that's all locked up. So, whatever mechanism, we need to do that to make that clear. If we need to table this and wait to get that, you know, or how do we, how do we make this clear to the board?
Is there a question on our ordinance also?
Well, I, I think, I mean, I haven't looked at the ordinance in a while, I couldn't pull it up. I believe it says that you cannot receive city water service unless you're within the city. So I think, but I definitely want to get our ordinance. I don't know if we require all annexations to get city water like what you were probably saying, so I don't know. You see what I'm saying, you can't get the city water unless you're in the city. But I don't know that we require any annexed property to be on city water.
But yes, as far as coming in, you don't come to the city and receive the water and sewer tap.
So, am I misunderstanding that the owner is, said he was fine with using both city and water? I mean sewer, water and sewer?
Yeah, he said he's fine with it.
So then, if, then if he agrees to do that, then can we move forward?
I think we need to move forward. I think we're, I mean, even if the man decides to do what he's doing, we're, we're talking about a business that's going to be in the city. We'd be fools not to move forward on this. And just, we shouldn't hold it up because of the water or the sewer. Now, it may, it's gonna make it better and more convenient for, for, I guess, record keeping, but they're already doing this, so.
Agreed.
That's something to go, but I think we need to move forward on this man's business or form a business out there that's going to benefit the city no matter what.
I, I agree with you, we should do nothing at this point to, to stand in the way of any, any revenue that comes in from a business or hurt a business owner's livelihood. We shouldn't do a thing to do that, but to get clarification is not, it's, it's not unreasonable at this point to, to get that clarification.
Well, I would say this, again, I wish I could have pulled up the ordinance, unless we require that, there's really no legal basis to deny zoning application.
Yeah.
Unless we require them to have it, so, it sounds like, I mean, it sounds like a smart decision as far as, but to be on city water, but unless we require that as a condition of the, of the zoning application, I would not advise you to deny or delay the zoning application for something that's not required by ordinance.
Dana, are you aware of any implications, you know, as far as public health and inspections and stuff, not hooked up to a?
Excuse me?
To a city water supply?
Am I aware of any public health implications?
Right, in other words, the health department has to inspect, you know, that restaurant on a regular basis. Is there any... Do they have any requirements that requires them to be hooked up to...
They have to have water.
They can hook up any water, private well or...
From the health department standpoint?
Yes.
A well and a water supply are both approved by DMR. So county water supplies water to Dairy Queen, they supply it to the Midway, supply it to South Town Field, all kinds of restaurants in the county. They're all high.
I've got to wait for Jimmy to come back in here.
From your perspective, this is not going to cause any grief with maintenance or not going to cause any grief. I mean, you can still maintain...
It won't cause any grief, they don't maintain it. They don't have... They'll end up with maintenance issues on the county line.
Understood, same, understood.
So you mentioned metering sewer or just going off the county?
No, she said we go off the county meter. But I have managed water and sewer systems before and I didn't... When I had sewer customer, had no water meter, meter and a meter, the sewer was discharged.
Dave, has he talked to the county water about hooking up?
I have no idea.
Did they mention anything about... They didn't have the volume for your sprinkler system?
Did they mention anything about the pressure that they have available in order to keep your sprinkler system active and disabled operating?
A lot of questions.
It's on him anyway, it's not on us.
We want the inspections to pass, so we want the guy to operate a business once he gets...
Talking about the sprinkler system here, no, we're not talking... I mean, I understand that, but the contractor is involved here and we're talking about the rezoning here anyway, you know, so...
Fair, fair.
You know, I mean, we need to move this project on, so...
So we can make it contingent?
No.
No.
No requirement.
So there's required to be annexed in the city besides your vote, is it to be contiguous and compact?
Yeah.
And almost based on your advice, we can't consider this factor in our vote?
I'm advising you not to consider what moves up to the city water or county water with regard to whether you annex the property.
Fair enough.
That's annexed.
Any questions, any other questions? So at seven eleven, we'll close the public hearing. Lendo, you got a public comment?
I'm Wendell Schmidt. I own two fifty St. Genevieve Drive, residence there and then a lot next to it. And I recently learned there's a lien on my property that the city got some brush people have a brush. I was trying to cut the brush myself, but I was not having a good... I don't really like playing with chainsaws, I haven't had... I'm kind of clumsy. I didn't want to cut off anything important, I got diabetes and stuff. I didn't want to wind up getting a limb cut off or something, you know, so... Anyway, I was working on it, it was just the city brought it. Anyway, I told Mr. Bowe, I think this was before winter, that I had to mine, it was going to help, the Hope Church was going to help me do it for free, so...
It wasn't the Hope Church. I go to Hope Church and there was no conversation with Hope Church.
Well, I had a meeting with some of the members of the Hope Church.
No, you never had a meeting with the members of Hope Church. You're wrong.
One of Aldermen here and Mr. Wolf...
It wasn't Hope Church, it was not Hope Church.
Well, it was somebody...
Hope Alliance Hollywood, it was not Hope Church.
And the sign that they put on the front yard says Hope Church.
No, it doesn't say Hope. Heavenly Hope, I'm sorry.
Heavenly Hope. Okay. Okay, I can't see some good either, so... Anyway, I had them lined up to help for free, so I was told to come and ask, you know, if you guys could take that lien off, because I planned to sell it and move way outside this town. Because I've lived here over fifty years, I've gone past this building every day of my life more than once. When I went to school, walking, driving, and as a teenager and a tax-paying adult, and I was just trying to live there. I wasn't begging anybody, I wasn't hurting anybody, I wasn't bringing any love. I can't really say all the things that I'd like to because you guys got the cameras on. I'd like to take the cameras off. I'll tell you a lot of things that were done to me while I've been living there that weren't legal. Anyway, I just wanted to know if you take the lien off of there so I can sell my property and move out of this town and you guys can do whatever you want to do, because I don't really like it here anymore. When you can't live someplace in peace and quiet without somebody coming and harassing you and using...
We're not doing any speculation.
Using forces that are not supposed to be used like that against old and disabled people, which it's illegal to harass anybody, much less somebody who's disabled, especially when they're going through rough times.
Do you have anything else to say?
That was what I had.
Okay. I don't have the authority to remove the lien, this board had to have it on it and I would say we'd get back to you.
Okay, do I... Are you guys going to send me a letter or...
I'm sure David will try to get ahold of you. He'll be able to, he's been able to get ahold of you before, so...
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Well, that was all I could think of.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
I need a motion to... Senator Jensen?
Motion to approve.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Takes us to Old Business, Bill number forty-three forty-nine, an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, accepting a proposal for Metro Ag Incorporated authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the removal and land utilization of lime residuals from the water treatment plant.
Motion to approve.
Need a roll call, please?
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderwoman Arbrooster?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number forty-three forty-nine now becomes ordinance forty-two seventy-four.
Thank you, takes us to Bill number forty-three fifty, an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, accepting a proposal from Metro Ag Incorporated and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the removal and land utilization of residuals from the wastewater treatment plant.
Motion to approve on this.
Have a roll call, please.
Alderwoman Arbrooster?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number forty-three fifty now becomes ordinance forty-two seventy-five.
Thank you, takes us to Bill number forty-three fifty-one, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a proposal for professional services with copper engineering for a five-year supervised program to help aid in the development of capital improvement plan for the waterline replacement within city's waterwork system.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderwoman Arbrooster?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number forty-three fifty-one now becomes ordinance forty-two seventy-six.
Thank you, takes us to New Business, Bill number forty-three fifty-two, an ordinance providing for the annexation to the City of St. Genevieve, existing corporate limits, certain real estate property owned by Plaza Aztec Family Grill Incorporated, twenty-one four five four, Highway thirty-two.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion for second reading?
Second.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
An ordinance providing for annexation to the City of St. Genevieve's existing corporate limits, certain real estate property owned by Plaza Aztec Family Grill Incorporated, twenty-one four five four, Highway thirty-two.
Motion to approve. Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
No.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderwoman Arbrooster?
Yes.
Seven yes, one no. Bill number forty-three fifty-two now becomes ordinance forty-two seventy-seven.
Thank you, takes us to other business, approval and application for electric license[1704.25]